Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. In compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we call this meeting to order. And first on our agenda is to give the oath of office to our newly elected council members. So if Debbie, Christina, Sean can join me in front of the dais, please?
That's what it's for, right? Break them on? Is she? I did, I did. Yeah. I had it.
Repeat after me. I, Jeff Wagner.
I, Jeff Wagner.
Have been duly elected.
Been duly elected.
To the office of?
To the office of.
City of Covington, city council position number seven.
City of Covington, council position number seven.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The constitutions.
The constitutions.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Christina. It's actually left hand. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Christina Soltes.
I, Christina Soltes.
Having been duly elected to the office of?
Having been duly elected to the office of?
City of Covington, city council position number one.
City of Covington, city council position number one.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of this office.
Of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations. I'm gonna move this way, because they can hear me, they need to hear everybody else. Okay, repeat after me. I, Sean Smith.
I, Sean Smith.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of?
To the office of?
City of Covington, city council position number five.
City of Covington, city council position number five.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And I will support and maintain.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all spumps. Debbie.
This is. I'll bet you that's.
No. They're never heavy.
Okay.
Okay, left hand. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Debbie Hartsack.
Hi, Debbie Hartsack.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of?
To the office of?
City of Covington.
City of Covington.
City council position number three.
City council position number three.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
The constitutions of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations. And congratulations to each of our newly re-elected council members, and thank you for being here. Thank you. All right, next is roll call. Krista, if you could please call the roll call.
Councilmember Soltes.
Here.
Councilmember Fordham.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsack.
Here.
Councilmember Harjahausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Wagner.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next on our agenda is selection of mayor and mayor pro tem. We will, just so everybody knows, we appoint our mayor every two years after an election in the even-numbered years. And with that, does council have any nominations they would like for mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to nominate Mr. Jeff Wagner as mayor for the city of Covington.
It's second.
Is there any other nominations? Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, Jeff has been our mayor for nearly twenty years, and there is no one up here that could do the job that he does. He represents our city very well, he works hard, he meets with our residents anytime they want to meet, and they are always delighted to speak with him. It's been an honor to work with him, and I, again, I just couldn't imagine anyone better for the job.
Thank you, Debbie. And Beth or Christina?
Christina.
I didn't hear who made the second, I apologize.
We tied. We owe each other a Coke. No. Okay, I appreciate your leadership over the last since you've been mayor over the last about five, six years, I think, so being on the dais, running the meetings, and being out in the community, you connect with the community on a personal level, on a humanitarian level, and continue to, I think you'll continue to represent our city in regional in the regional capacity, making sure that Covington's needs are kept in the forefront. So, thank you very much for.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wishing to speak for against the motion? All right. With that, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Jeff Wagner as the mayor of Covington for the next two years. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much, I really appreciate it, and it does not go lightly, I appreciate it. Next is selection of mayor pro tem. Is there anybody? Joe?
I would like to nominate Sean Smith.
Second.
Is there any other nominations for mayor pro tem? Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sean's done a wonderful job as our mayor pro tem, he represents us very well with the fire department. I think he does a great job filling in for Jeff when needed. I am jealous he didn't take me to Houston with him last night, but that's okay, I'll forgive him. Other than that, I think he's fit for the job, he does, he does a wonderful job filling in when needed and does a great job of making sure we stay on track.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I would say that I always appreciate Sean's extremely thorough and considerate view of the issues that are presented to us at council. He looks at everything in a pragmatic way, but also with empathy to residents, impact to the environment, impact to our budget, always with grace, respect, and represents us extremely well.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to point Sean Smith as our next mayor pro tem. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Thank you. With that, we will move into a reception for, oh, go ahead.
If I could just
Yes.
real quickly, before we do that, Regan's coming up, and on behalf of the council, we wanted to present you, Mr. Mayor, with this plaque for twenty years of service to the city of Covington. For those that don't know, this is Jeff's twentieth year on the council. And you are a, as all have said, a stalwart advocate for this community and do an outstanding job representing our needs and our, our issues and our concerns on, not only council, but throughout the region and state. And this is a small token of our appreciation, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Wow, that's unexpected.
I think we have something else we'd like to present to you as well.
Oh, no. That seems. Wow, thank you. Oh. Well, thank you all very much for that. I have one question. How did you do that without me knowing? Only I know pretty much. Yeah.
We all just, we disappointed you for a week.
No, this is.
We had to sneak into the building. Or just do the.
This is, I am definitely surprised and very thankful. It's, I don't do this for the thanks, I do it to, as you know, to give back. I learned from my parents. And that young lady sitting right back there, she was my well, during leadership class, she was who I spoke to to help get me through everything during way back when, but, thank you. So, thank you, everybody, I really appreciate this, this is very unexpected, so thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, yes? Oh, I wasn't even looking on there. Chris, Representative Sterns, welcome.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I guess I don't see my video on there, but I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm well dressed. I just wanted to say, what a wonderful tribute, and, and thank you so much for your
Okay.
An honor to count you as a friend, and I, I am so grateful that you are, for all the work you do for the people of Covington and, and you just look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Representative Sterns, and I really appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you for all that you do for, not just our forty-seventh district, but for our entire region, thank you. Anything else?
No, it's just.
Okay. So with that, we will go into a reception for twenty minutes and come back at seven forty. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much, we are coming back from our reception. And thank you to council and staff for that. It's the first time I've been surprised in, I don't know how long, and probably the first time I've had tears since Natalie was born eleven years ago, so, thank you. Next up is approval of agendas, are there any changes to the agenda tonight, Regan?
No, there's no change.
Thank you. Look for approval of the agenda as posted.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is public communication from our awesome chamber executive Dana Newt with the Covington Chamber of Commerce, welcome.
Bridget, for chair, would you like to join me?
Oh, sure.
Didn't you say you were coming there? Well, stay. All right, then. I'm off to a good start.
It happens to everyone.
Sure. Well, good evening, everybody, as always, thank you for having us, we always enjoy giving our updates, and congratulations, Mayor, and to our new or renewed city council people, we always appreciate your support, and we look forward to working with you for another four years. For those of you who don't know, Mayor Wagner was one of the original founders for the Covington Chamber. So, he is one of the reasons that we are here tonight, so thank you for that, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, if Krista would pull up the infographic for us, I put together some, some stats and some data for you. I knew you loved me. All right, so it's, so it's kind of small, but I'm not going to focus on the numbers, that's for you to look at, and I can email that to you later if you like. But the highlights in the infographic, so it shows that our membership is an all-time high, we have a hundred and seventy-one members, including thirty-five members last year, we've already got one new member this year and a couple more in the hopper, ready to join, so membership is going great, super excited, so the infographic gives you a little bit of the picture of what we, what we've done last year. With our new CRM and our new website, we have a lot more data tracking options, so we can check, we can compare some of the objective data from, from year to year. But I'm not going to focus on those things today, but the, the numbers I think are interesting, so I hope you'll take a look at that. What I think is really important, and what doesn't show in the numbers, is the welcoming culture that our Covington Chamber has. I can't count the number of times that somebody has come to me and said, you know, there's something just different about your chamber, there's just something so welcoming, people come and they get engaged right away. I think our, our retention is at an all-time high, which I'm really excited about, we'll have less than a third of the churn this year that we had the last couple years, so I think that, that speaks to our culture, people come to our events, they want to come to our events, they want to meet each other, and they get engaged right away. I think it's also important to note the impact that we have on the community and, on the business community, but also Covington, whether it's doing advocacy work, doing a litter pickup, or our Good Work Fund and donating to some of our nonprofits, and like to urban business support and the DECA class at Kentridge. Covington Chamber is growing every day, I'm getting new leads, whether it's from our website, somebody that was referred to us by somebody else, and that tells me that we're doing something right. This year, something you may not know is that our board made a commitment to grow, so I went to them in the fall, and I made a pitch that I wanted more support in-house, so that I could be out doing more advocacy work, going out and meeting members and welcoming new businesses to the community. I asked for our wonderful ten ninety-nine contractor, Kylana Temiosa, to, I asked them to hire her as an employee, because I thought retention of staff is very important, and I asked for halftime, as opposed to the hours that we had before, and my, my wonderful board, they, they heard me, they were willing to take a risk, they were willing to make an investment, and so this is going to be a growth year for us, so Kylana and I are going to wow them with some great numbers and by doing some great advocacy work and work within the community, so I'm really excited to be able to, to take, to take us to that next level. We're also doing some very exciting new things this year. In addition to that, we are going to, in collaboration with the Covington Economic Development Council, we are going to host our first Covington Restaurant Week. Right now, the dates are going to be, it's probably going to be in March, we're still working on that, we've got a, a committee, and as I said, we're working with CEDIS on that, but it will be an opportunity for our businesses who have all suffered since COVID to get some new people in the door, we're going to do a passport program, so that the more they visit these restaurants, the more times they get their name in a drawing for gift certificate or gift cards from our businesses, it will actually be a revenue generating opportunity for us to help fund our operations, but really the key is to give visibility to our businesses. We are going to expand our business awards this year, in the past, or at least the, the three years I've been there, the chamber has two business awards, a Business of the Year and a Spirit of Covington Award. I want to expand that to maybe five or six awards, we're going to have a small committee decide what those awards should be, and rather than presenting them as just a small portion of our luncheon, we're actually going to have a special celebration just for the awards, so it'll be like a, a receptions. I have to adjust the microphone. Sorry, guys. Thank you. So, instead of our third Thursday happy hour, we'll do an award celebration, so it'll be the same day and time that people are used to, but we'll do something a little bit, a little bit special to expand that. We're also talking about doing a wine walk in Covington this year. And if Restaurant Week goes well this spring, then we will do another one this fall. Other things, we're going to continue that you, you, you know us for, and that's our networking events, our little, our litter pickups, ready, set, play, our Good Work Fund, and of course, Covington Makers Market. I've been part of the chamber for three years, as of February first, and I'm so proud and excited to be a part of the chamber. I'm excited about the things to come, and I appreciate the support of our city, our board, our ambassadors and our members, and the opportunity we have to support the community in meaningful ways. To stay on top of, for all the rest of you who probably already get our newsletter, to stay on top of our news and updates, please follow us on social media or sign up for our newsletter, and of course, we are always available to answer questions and to come and talk to you, was that long enough, Regan, you want me to stretch it out a little bit? Okay. Can I answer any questions for you?
Does council have any questions for Dana?
Could I just say one thing real quick? Thank you. On top of all of that, I think it's really important to recognize the working relationship that we have with the city of Covington. I know, that's not, that's something that we shouldn't take for granted, right? Some chambers, you know, they really are on an island unto themselves, yes, we're different entities, but how nice that we're all growing toward greatness together, and especially within the last couple of years, I would say, right before COVID, and then being able to just come alongside the business community, to come alongside the city of Covington, it's, it's something that makes us successful, we don't take it for granted, we appreciate walking alongside of all of you in all of this important work, we're not just about the business community, if you ask our members, they talk about the connection being the most important thing, not just about themselves, but the connection to the people in Covington, whether they live here, you know, and work here, or just own businesses here, it's so important, and, you know, I, I just like to think that we are walking in step together, we're mirroring each other, we're each doing our, our special things, and we trust you, and I think you trust us, so, thank you for that.
I just want to say, thank you. The chamber has come a long ways, remember when we first started it back in ninety-two, and we started on it in ninety-one, became official in ninety-two, and just seeing the progress and with your leadership and how everything has evolved, and I think like what you just said, Bridget, the, the partnership with the chamber and the city doesn't happen everywhere, and the, the partnership that continues to be created, followed, new things keep coming up, new ideas, it's, it is a pleasure to.
It's, it is a pleasure to partner with the Chamber here in Covington, so thank you. And please pass on to the board that their, the hard work is much appreciated. And congratulations to you as well.
Yeah.
And congratulations Dana, so it's nice.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. Next is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Please notice that to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five, campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the period, is prohibited. And is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council at this time? No? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Alright, seeing nobody raise their hand or approach the podium, a public comment is closed at this time. We will have a second opportunity towards the end of our council meeting. Next up is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C seven. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next is new business item number one to consider the appointment of the council's audit committee. Um our previous uh Casey, do you want to say anything? I, I turned it over to you.
I'm sure. Thank you, uh Mayor Council. So tonight is, uh the purpose of tonight is to appoint or reappoint three members to the audit committee. Uh just as a refresher, the current members of the audit committee are Joseph and Elizabeth and Jeff. And we go through this process every January following an election year. And the council committee as a whole, um what you would do as part of the audit committee is you approve all vouchers, including payroll at the next available council meeting um after the audit committee has reviewed all of those. And I could defer to the audit committee members. They could maybe shed a little bit more light on what's involved, but it's generally every two weeks we have accounts payable process um that gets reviewed. Um I don't want to scare you away, but it's generally a stack. I apologize. Um we're super thankful for uh that you diligently come in and review those for us every two weeks. Uh it's super helpful to have another set of eyes on those. And our auditors really appreciate that when we're um under audit, so I'll turn it over to you to uh see who would like to join the audit committee.
Okay. So currently, we've had Joe, Beth and myself on the audit committee. I did uh reach out to Beth and she, uh she said unless she's changed her mind, so that she would love to stay on it. Uh I reached out to Joe and Joe said that with um all of his uh school, schooling, teaching and everything that's going on, he'd like to step down. So thank you for all of your hard work, Joe, that you've done over the past four years, six years.
Four years.
Four years on it. And then I did reach out to Christina and asked her if she would like to, because she doesn't have anything going on right now. And so Christina did volunteer to uh
Perfect.
be on the audit committee. So um if council would um approve with a motion uh to have Beth, Christina, or if somebody wants to take over for me, I'm fine with that, but I've enjoyed doing that since except for two years. I've been on it since two thousand and four, so I've been, I've enjoyed reading numbers and books, so but if that or if anybody else wants to join, I can, I'm happy to step down.
Uh so moved. Second.
Quick.
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Christina Soltes, Elizabeth Porter and myself to the council's audit committee. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um just, I, I know all of you are um doing a great job uh keeping track of our uh budget and our spending and making sure it uh complies with, you know, what we approve up here on the dais, so I have the utmost faith in each of you and appreciate your doing this for us, so thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak for or against the motion? Right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Christina Soltes, Elizabeth Porter and Jeff Wagner to the council's audit committee. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And yes, I do enjoy reading the fine print of everything, so thank you. Uh next is new business item number two, consider revising the Parks and Recreation Commission responsibilities. Ethan?
Uh good evening, Mayor and Council. Um this item to consider revising Parks and Recreation Commission responsibilities uh is being brought forward because it's probably been twenty, ten, twenty years uh since the responsibilities were set for the Parks and Rec Commission. And just over that time, the city, the Parks and Rec uh program uh has changed uh and is falling a little bit out of alignment with what the Parks and Rec Commission currently does in practice. Uh and so uh what's being brought forward is really just bringing what it does in practice into alignment with the proposed uh changes. Um these changes were shared with Parks and, they were prepared by city staff. They were shared with Parks and Rec Commission uh a number of months ago, uh so they could review them. Um they agreed that they seem reasonable, and so now we're bringing it forward to uh the council. Uh just as an example of what we were trying to kind of clean up with this is some of the responsibilities had to do with preparing plans and programs and things like that, and those are items that staff typically do. Um what we are retaining in the revisions are that the Parks Commission continues to function as liaisons with the community, advocates for Parks and Recreation, uh and advisors to the city council on Parks and Recreation matters. With that, if there's any questions, happy to take those.
Counsel, have any questions for Ethan? This council wish to take action tonight? We have before us a potential to adopt a resolution, substantial form is that attached here too. To pass a resolution revising the Parks and Recreation Commission responsibilities.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I mean, just, just looking over the changes, they, they seem reasonable. It's obviously important. Um it's validated by the commission and, and staff and provides that flexibility without undue burden on our commissioners that already do a lot and volunteer a lot and do a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
It's a lot of cleanup of language in there, which is good. It makes it a lot, a lot easier to understand and honestly, it makes it easier for me to make sure that they're doing what they're do, what they're supposed to be doing and makes it easier for all of us, so it's uh, I think it's a good change.
Anybody else like, uh thank you, Joe. Anybody else like to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution in substantial form. Is that attached here too to pass a resolution revising the Parks and Recreation Commission responsibility. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. That concludes new business. Next is future agenda items. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January twenty-third. We have commission interviews at six with our council meeting at seven, and then don't forget our summit um at the end of January. And does council have anything they'd like to see as a potential item on a future agenda? All right, with that, we will go move into council staff comments. Um I don't see chief here tonight, so let's start with Ethan.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Dawn?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I just want to let you know that you guys probably heard the potential for some uh inclement weather uh later on this week and into the weekend, so um our guys are uh this, today basically we're mounting up and retesting all of our uh snow and ice equipment in preparation for that, so uh depending on how things go, well, obviously if we need to go into round the clock shifts, we'll do that and everything, but wanted to let you guys know that we're uh prepared uh if that comes about. Uh nothing else.
Thank you, Dawn. Selena?
Good evening, Council. I have nothing for you tonight, but I do want to say congratulations to all our newly elected council members. It's good to see you at the dais.
Thanks, Selena. Casey?
Uh nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh there's no executive session and I have no report for tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Regan?
Uh today I sent final revisions for our summit agenda uh to Jim Reed, so we'll have that finalized. Packet will start to be put together. We hope to have it out to council about a week before the, the summit, uh to give you time to, to review that. And uh like Selena said, just congratulations to our um newly sworn in council members and to Jeff on a wonderful twenty years here in Covington. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista?
I was planning to echo that and say congratulations to our reelected council members. Thank you so much for your service and congratulations to Jeff for twenty years. That is quite an amazing feat.
Thank you.
Very well done. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Christina?
Well, it is good to be back. Feels, feels like home, uh some normalcy. Thank you for easing me in lightly and with this amazing meeting and even a party. I'm kidding. Um nothing for me. Happy New Year to everyone and congratulations to, to all the reelected officials and Jeff, we really, I, I really meant every word I said and it's, it's just an honor to sit at the dais with you.
Thank you.
And happy New Year to everyone.
Congratulations to everybody that got reappointed and it was fantastic seeing Elliot sworn in officially in front of everybody, in front of such a large crowd. It was nice to see everybody here and I know they don't always stick around for the business stuff, but regardless, it's always great to have these kind of activities that bring people to chambers and, and connect. Um thank you, Jeff, for all that you do. Sorry I wasn't in front of the flags. I had to wasn't able to come in in person, but uh looking forward to the summit and um city action days on the uh seventh and eighth coming up, so that's about it for right now.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Uh just quickly, the last RFA meeting was canceled for uh the Christmas holidays, so we'll have our, the next one will be next week. Um other than that, happy New Year to all. It's good to see you all again and yeah, I'm looking forward to an uh exciting new year.
Thank you, Sean. Debbie?
I had a question about um will we be having warming centers on Friday, or is it just dependent on what happens?
We haven't discussed it yet. Um we could, I'll get ahold of Andy. Usually he's on top of that. He's part of a a committee of emergency specialists that um they have certain criteria if it's under a certain amount, or u-usually we've done cooling centers. I don't think we've done a heating center yet, but we can talk to him about it, see what the region is doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Um I saw a bulletin from the regional uh homeless authority. It might have the uh name of it incorrect, but they said they were gonna reach out to all of the cities and ask what we would be doing, so I'm
Yeah, I haven't heard from them yet. I, I presume ones that are doing it are through the night, and so that would um, that would be something that we'd have to activate
Okay.
different than what we've done, so.
All right, thank you. Uh and I want to thank um many of the city managers that came out uh the week between Christmas and New Year's and helped at the storehouse with the, the overload of food, so um it was really like a nice family event. Congratulations to you, Jeff. It really has been a pleasure. I mean, what you bring to this group is just amazing, so thank you for that. Um that's all I had.
Thank you, good to hear. Jennifer?
Again, uh to echo everyone else's comments, congratulations to uh newly electeds. Congratulations uh Sean and Jeff on your appointments and to Christina, welcome back. Um congratulations on growing family and I'm really looking excited, uh looking forward to summit. I'm always, it's so good to see Jim Reed. I just talking to him on the phone. I swear, I always go over. I just, I could talk to him um for hours. He's just any of the fabulous facilitator I was at. Um something else that had a facilitator and I was just comparing in my head, oh, Jim wouldn't do that this way. He, he come, he's very um unbiased and uh doesn't bring his own agenda and uh we are lucky to have him. So anyway, looking forward to it and getting um to, to make plans for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe?
So first off, congratulations to everyone on their reelection. Well, I'm happy to be serving with all of you guys again. Jeff, uh twenty years. I don't know where uh you got stamina for that, but I'm hoping for another twenty from you. Um I know that's gonna put you around forty-two by the time you're done with it, but uh but I am very happy to be serving with all of you. Uh all of my extra meetings that I have got canceled this month. King County, I apparently can't get people for the RTC right now. I think Seattle hadn't appointed like one person, but they need to, and now there has King County. SCA is on it. We're all ready to go, but uh so there's, so RTC is canceled next week. PIC is also canceled for tomorrow because there is a good amount of cities in the county who haven't gotten back to SCA with who their PIC reps are. Which, I gue, I know SCA knows who ours are because I have to be there for the next at least two years. Unless Christina wants to fill in on a certain night, she wants to call, get, say, hey, I'll take that meeting. I'll gladly give it to her. Uh I do have my first PIC leadership planning meeting on Friday though, so just gonna get to go sit down and talk a little and talk with uh Brian, David and Chris, and we'll figure it, figure out how PIC's gonna run this year and other than that, uh do stay warm. It is gonna be cold this weekend, so if you guys, you know, just bundle up, stay warm, don't go anywhere if you don't have to and and enjoy, you know, some good movies and hot chocolate this weekend.
Thank you, Joe. And for those of you who don't, um I know we brought it up in December, but for those that don't know, Joe was elected as the vice chair of our Public Issues Committee. Um so looking forward to having you on there, Joe, so thank you. Like I said earlier, I am extremely surprised and honored that you did that. Um I've been in this community for thirty-five years, moved here in eighty-eight and uh it's been running and didn't want to get on the council back then when we formed the city and uh but it was Pat and Margaret convinced me to run in two thousand and three, so it uh for two thousand and four, so it's been an honor to serve alongside you and everybody and serve the city. It's uh and the word I was trying to remember is you were my mentor during Leadership Institute. So it's uh I've loved it. And your comment about facilitator, uh Jennifer, uh Jim Reed is awesome. I remember one of our very first facilitators that um we had a full day and only spent half the day working about the city and the other half was him trying to sell us something. So, yeah, so Jim just does an awesome job. I would like a copy of that video if it's not okay, I would appreciate that. The uh I just hearing, well, I don't know if I want to hear it again. I don't, I think each of you might have received an email from the Sea Life Conservation. I just wanted to give you a copy if you wanted a written copy. I did sign it as mayor of Covington. So that you know that we're this is dealing with the battery energy storage systems and making sure that things are done properly. Dealing with wildlife, with um human schools and everything, so it's just one more step moving forward of something that just doesn't want to go away, so if they're just, the permit has been pulled, but that doesn't mean it can't come back, but they are looking for other property to build it on, because that is, they want to build by that substation. So the fight's not over. We will keep pushing. With that, that's all I've got, and so I would like to, this is our second opportunity for public comment. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Margaret, welcome. So glad you could be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Margaret Hardo. My address is two six nine oh two, one sixty ninth Avon, oh, place, I can't even remember where I live. Uh, southeast, uh, Covington, Washington. Um, I would, um, like to begin my remarks tonight by, uh, channeling Mary Pritchard, who always said save the best till last, hit pick the second public comment, time to speak. So here I am, Mary. Um, and she wishes she could be here tonight. I must, to let you know on a personal note. First of all, I want to congratulate the four returning council members, um, council member Hartsock, council member Smith, council member Soltis and council member Wagner. I'd like to also congratulate someone else sitting in this room. Some of you may not be aware of this, but I remember this week so very well. Ten years ago this week, on this coming Friday, your city manager began his job at the helm of our city. So this is the beginning of Regan's tenth year and, um, we are so grateful.
Thank you.
Jeff, I tried to put this just on one small piece of paper. This is, I, I take notes this way. Uh, but you and I will get together and we'll talk about, um, legacies and we'll talk about legends and we'll talk about good times. But I'd like to offer that your recognition tonight is a celebration. A celebration of a servant leader who's made a commitment to a community. Covington is a place for families and you and Michelle and the girls, Madison, Alyssa and Natalie, have shown that to us in so many ways, whether at work or at play, your family is present with you. And we are so grateful to Michelle and the girls for sharing you because it does take a commitment from your family. And, uh, your girls have known nothing else, but, um, being part of the life of a city council member and the mayor of the community. Uh, and who knows which one of the three might be sitting in that chair someday. And I happen to know that there's, uh, there is a leader, a growing in that family. I also want to tell you, Jeff, and this is from me personally. I've been very proud to be a colleague of yours here and in so many other places. We've taken many journeys together. Um, hopefully we've found resolution. Um, we've used compromise and we've got a good future to look forward to in this community. Secondly, you talked about me as a mentor. I want to let you know that it was an honor to be your mentor. Mentoring is all about being a learner and a teacher. You weren't always the learner. Many times I was the learner when we sat down together and shared and it talked about how defining your role could be in this community. Third, it's been a privilege to be your friend. I would say, welcome to the double decade club. But you and I go back more than three decades, almost thirty-five years plus in this community. Because Jeff was a charter member of Kewanis in nineteen ninety-two. The chamber was formed in nineteen ninety-two. But prior to that, we had a, well, there were two little groups that Jeff was involved in. One of them was Reach Out Covington. Right from the very start, this community was shining its light on youth. And you were part of this little oddball grassroots group that said, we gotta do something for our kids. And so we had open gym nights at Kentwood and at, um, Cedar Heights. And we played basketball. We learned about computers. We had pizza. You can't do it without pizza. And we had great times with the young people in our community. Also, um, the Covington Community Council was a precursor to the city of Covington. And you were an active part of that, pulling the community together to become a city. And then there's Covington Days. You'd like to think that our city invented Covington Days. They did not. There were business people like Mr. Jeff Wagner, who put on Covington Day in the Safeway parking lot or even in the old parking lot where, um, Johnny's and the, um, the appliance store used to be. So there were dump tanks and there were games and there was food and there were prizes and there were parades long before we even were a part of, of being a city. And it was because of the commitment from someone like this man here, a servant leader, connected to his community, gave his heart to Covington. And we are so grateful for the, the legacy that you have created, Jeff, and the legacy that will continue and be in place long after you're gone. Thank you so very much. I love you.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, that's the second time. Is there anybody else wishing to address counsel this evening? Anybody online wishing to address counsel? With that, seeing no, uh, executive session tonight and no further business, this council meeting is adjourned at eight seventeen. Thank you.